And six feet.
We'll call the meeting to order, the Wright County Planning Commission. First thing on the agenda today would be to approve the meeting minutes of May 7th, 2020. Has everyone been able to look over the meeting minutes? And if so, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second? That was Dan Bravender making a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
This is Jan, I make the second.
All right, I have a motion made and seconded to approve minute, meeting minutes of May 7th. Is there any discussion?
Okay.
If there's no discussion, all those that approved, do roll calls signify by saying aye in their name. Aye, Dan Mall.
Aye, Dan Bravender.
Aye, Dan Fowler.
Aye, Dan Carter.
Aye, Charlie Brown.
Aye, Dan Oliver.
All right, motion's unanimous. Uh, motion carries. First on the agenda today is Noah Fisher representing Hoffman Construction. And just so everyone knows, he is here at the table, and I'll hand it over to Sean to let us know what's going on.
We could get the name for the record.
Can we get your name for the record, please?
Noah Fisher.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission, this first item has to do with the Johnson Materials gravel pit involved with the I-94 project. Property is zoned agriculture, is in the land use plan as agriculture. The request is to extend the already existing conditional use permit for nighttime hours to include Sunday, starting at 6:00 PM, and to also allow materials to be hauled from the Johnson pit on Saturday. I'm gonna let the applicant describe the reason for the extended hours in his operations.
All right, do you wanna fill us in on what you're asking for?
Yep, so, um, right now, as the permit is, we, I believe we start at Monday at 6:00 PM and go till Saturday at 9:00 AM. Um, and we're looking to start a shift on Sunday night, so we can get six.
Mr. I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, better.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, um, so we wanna get our six shifts in, uh, just like we're running right now during our daytime hours. Um, so when we do switch back to nights, uh, we wanna get those six shifts as well and start on Sunday night, Monday night, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night, and Friday night, and we'll end on that Saturday morning. And also, with the Saturday hauling, um, once we get traffic switched and we got a head-to-head and we'll be reconstructing westbound, we're gonna need material to build that road out of Johnson's pit on Saturdays. Um, and I have found out, um, he only gets 10 Saturdays, um, a year, and that's from eight to 12, and that just isn't gonna be efficient enough for us, um, to do it. We, we need almost every Saturday we can get.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public, Sean, online?
Nope. As far as I know, nobody has signed in for this item from the public.
Okay. So then, do I have any comments? Charlie, do you have any comments? You wanna start?
It's actually that we need to get on it, and I mean, by doing this, it's a safe thing also, they're, they're trying to get as much done at night when the traffic is not on the freeway still lined up.
Okay. Pat?
No. I have no comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, Jan? Jan, do you have any comment?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, Ken?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I was, uh... Mr. Chair, I would like to give a little bit further clarification on the specific changes in the hours, if they could be simple and brief. I did not understand the applicant's narrative, or I didn't, I couldn't hear him, actually.
Give it a shot.
Okay.
Ken? Ken, this is Sean. Can you pick me up?
I'm sorry?
Can you pick, are you hearing me?
Please. Yeah, you can hear me slightly, Sean. If you can maybe, I don't know, move the microphone closer or something?
Yeah. So, Ken, currently, the hours start at 6:00 PM on Monday. They are looking to add an additional day and start at 6:00 PM on Sunday. So instead of not having hauling on Saturday and Sunday night, this, this will include Sunday night. So it'll just be Saturday night that they won't be hauling. And then the-
Currently, the hauling also, I'm sorry, Sean, currently, the hauling occurs on all days Saturday, is that correct, during the day?
It does not. That is also part of the request. Currently, the pit is allowed to operate eight to 12 for 10 Saturdays. They wanna operate from 6:00 to 7:00 hauling materials out of the pit, but not operations outside of 8:00 to 12.
So basically, it's, uh, every night except Saturday?
Correct.
Now, it would be 6:00 PM to 7:00 AM, is that correct?
Well, it would be essentially around the clock. It would be normal hours of 7:00 to 7:00, and then nighttime hours after and before that.
Okay, very well, that makes it a little bit more clear for me, Sean, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Jan, Bravender?
Uh, I had a question for the applicant. When we first approved the hours of operation, did you know at that time that this was gonna happen? That you were gonna wanna increase them?
I did not. Um, we thought we would be efficient enough on our five shifts. Um, there's been a lot of design changes, I'm not gonna get too much into that, uh, that's a lot of, um, contract language, um, but-
Training.
Yeah.
Between, well, that's between federal highways and MinDOT, a lot of those changes have happened, that's, that's really not at my level. Um, and there's still some talk about that. Um, but with those changes, there's been road realignments, ditch cuts, just a lot of, a lot of different factors that may not sound small, but they, they do add up, um, and we are trying to still get that median done and push through this, 'cause once that median's done and that outside's done, then I'm not gonna be worried about this night hauling, um, at all. Um, so I just need that, that one extra shift to give us that extra push to get through this stage.
So help me out, how long is this gonna last? If you get that extra night?
Month and a half, month? That's just a, a rough schedule right now that I'm trying to think of, as far, and that's finishing shoulders, paving, testing materials, and switching traffic.
So these new designs, these came after the first CUP was issued, is what you're saying?
Yes.
And this is driven by the federal highway?
Correct. Federal highways and MinDOT.
And MinDOT. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I guess, I, I, this is Dan Mall, and I have some concerns with it, as far as the way it's written for us, it's for the 2020 and 2021 seasons. And if we give you, we don't specify a time period in there, that gives you the whole season to do this, and it's gonna take that long to get I-94 done?
Mr. Chair, um, so the component including Sunday-
Yep.
Would be March 15th to August 1st. The motion doesn't necessarily reflect what was on the notice.
On the notice, okay.
So the around-the-clock night hauling, I'll call it, the normal operations, the current CUP-
Yep.
Was starting at Monday at 6:00 PM, ending on August 1st of 2020.
Okay.
If this were extended to Sunday at 6:00 PM, the end date would still be August 1st of 2020. The request for Saturday is for this season and next.
So you, so that would give them two years of, of Saturdays from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So that pit would be basically open seven days a week then, or six days a week, pardon me.
Correct, but the hours of operation would be normal during the weekdays-
Right.
After-
After August.
After August, except for an hour early, and there would be no limit on the Saturdays, is the request.
Right.
Right.
So then you're still looking at the next two years of that pit being open on Saturdays.
For hauling of materials.
For hauling of materials.
Not processing.
My question is, how do we know, or how do we know that it's just your company using it at that time? I mean, you're gonna be on I-94 hauling gravel out of there on, every Saturday for the next two years.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, um, that's something I could talk with Jeff Johnson, um, who runs that pit, and we can, we could figure out signage that says, you know, either we can have it opened to public on, on, if it's one of his 10 Saturdays, or we can say Hoffman or Johnson crushing employees only.
'Cause, I mean, that's, that's my concern, we give them Saturdays for the next two years, and all of a sudden, every road project or anything coming up, that is going to be a, be a very busy pit, and you have the lake right across, you have, I mean, we've heard the neighbors in here with their, their concerns, and I just, I wanna make sure we at least consider the neighborhood some before we start giving out Saturdays for two years, basically. Does anyone else have any comment?
I would like to answer.
Jan, go ahead.
Jan. Um, yeah, I'm really concerned about Saturday hauling, too. Uh, one of the things that, that I was just about to say is, I really had a hard time hearing you, so I'm just gonna ask a couple of questions, just to clarify my mind. What you're proposing, the reason that you need to have the Saturday, uh, for the next two years is because, why? This answer that's hard for me.
We, it's as simple as it sounds, we work Saturdays to stay on track. Um, that's, that's how a lot of these MinDOT contracts work, when they give you a date, if you don't hit that date, there is very serious consequences, so the more ahead we are, um, the better, 'cause there is things along the way in, in big linear projects like this that do come up, and we need to be prepared for that.
And, and all of it would be for the I-94 project?
Correct, yep, this is Hoffman, this project of I-94, yep.
Did you hear that, Jan?
Um, I'm not, not very well, Jan, maybe you can just tell me.
What, what he is saying is that with the I-94 project, they need, there's things that come up during the, the project, that they need the six days a week to be able to get the project done, but if they do not finish the project, there is serious consequences.
Are the serious consequences are, are placed by the other department?
Correct.
Uh, but if you don't need to haul on Saturdays, you wouldn't have to go ahead and, and be doing that. Is there any chance at all that there will not be haul, Saturday hauling?
Well, there's definitely Saturdays, you know, it's, it's all weather-dependent, um, if we're gonna need material that Saturday, um, you know, we, we will haul a lot of Saturdays, but it's not gonna be every Saturday of, it's not gonna be 52 Saturdays in a year.
Okay, did you hear, did you hear that, Jan?
Yeah, it must be necessarily a Saturday, is that right?
Correct.
But it probably will.
Chair?
Sean?
So a question for the applicant. You are not gonna work on Saturday, taking materials anywhere other than the interstate project.
Correct, this, the Hoffman's only project from Monticello to Clearwater is the I-94 project.
And if you don't work on the interstate project, you won't be hauling anywhere on Saturday, obviously.
Correct.
And again, the operations of the gravel pit proper, uh, digging, processing, crushing, are limited to 10 Saturdays from eight to 12. The only thing this applicant can do outside of those hours is haul pre-prepared material, be loaded up and hauled out. But he is asking for an hour outside of the traditional seven to seven.
Okay.
Which, and just, this is Noah Fisher with Hoffman, all our material that we are getting out of Johnson right now, um, for, for the project is pre-made and, and sitting there in piles, so it's, it's already in its own pile and, and just ready to be loaded up.
Yeah, that's normal during the day.
Yep.
Operates during the day and hauls at night.
Correct. Okay. Is there any other questions? Dan Bravender?
I have one more question for the applicant, that extra hour you need in the morning, 6:00 AM, what is that for?
Um, that, that is just a number I did put on there, I, I am more than willing to, to do the normal operation hours, if that's something you guys are, are pushing towards more.
I think that, and that typically what we've done in the past is, we've given forgiveness for if they need a half-hour startup time for the plant, but since this is not the case, I would tend to stick to the 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM on that.
Okay, that, that sounds good.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? If not, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Dan Bravender has a motion to make?
Motion to approve a conditional use permit to extend the night hauling of material from the pit to include Sundays, with the hours to start at 6:00 PM Sunday through Saturday, 6:00 AM, and the hauling of materials on Saturday during the 2020 to 2021 season from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Activities specific to this CUP and the loading of aggregate during night hours in the pit will be limited to truck loading and hauling only. No mining or processing of materials. All operations in the pit during the night must be related to and in conjunction with the reconstruction of Interstate 94.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Charlie, we're all about that.
All right, Sean has something to say.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we did not add the part about the August 1st, 2020 end date for the extra day of hauling Sunday through Monday.
Isn't this following the CUP that was already issued?
It is, but we haven't included that same date, so we've changed the hours-
Okay.
But we did not-
I was assuming that date was already gonna be in there.
It was, so right after 6:00 PM Sunday through Saturday at 6:00 PM, ending on August 2, August 1st, 2020, and then the rest is accurate for Saturday.
I would entertain that change, Mr. Charlie, if-
Dan Bravender will entertain that change, Charlie, will you go along with that with your second?
Yes, well-
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, can we have a roll call? Yep?
Mr. Chair, do, do you have the modified, uh, motion rewritten, please?
You wanna try that, Jan?
Okay. To approve a conditional use permit to extend night hauling of material from the pit to include Sundays, with the hours to start at 6:00 PM Sunday through Saturday at 6:00 AM, or the dates-
August 1st.
March 15th through August 1st, 2020. You want me to read the whole thing, Ken? That was the change.
No, no, just the change, thank you, Dan.
Yep.
And then the other change was 7:00 AM.
7:00 AM would stay the way I read before.
On Saturdays.
On Saturdays.
Okay, is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, can I have a roll call, vote, starting with Jan? Jan, do you approve or disapprove?
It's not Jan or Dan.
Jan, do you approve or disapprove?
Um, I disapprove.
Pat, approve or disapprove?
I say aye.
Ken?
Ken says aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Dan Bravender?
Aye.
Dan Mall, aye. Motion carries, let us know that Jan disapproved. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll have just a short pause here.
So, so at this opportunity, Jan, can you hear me?
Yeah, barely.
If you can turn the sound up on your phone-
Thank you.
That might help.
I have a mic on my head.
Oh.
Details or having it spelled out in a conditional use permit. With that, I'll turn it over to the Chair.
All right. Do you have what you want to add to that about the night hauling?
I guess I'll add the night hauling part. I have Fane companies that are in there in addition. And Dunick's really hadn't requested the night hauling, but Fane asked if they get a job on the freeway or something like that where it requires night hauling, that it would be a limited type deal. It's not going to be around the clock. It's just site specific to a freeway job that would require nights. It's nothing that would pertain any more than that.
Okay.
Yeah, it is something that we've seen more and more, especially in around the metro, west metro area and stuff, as traffic levels continue. And that is looking at alternate ways through some of these contracts. And like, one of the things that they was requiring in some cases, night paving on some of the heavier travel areas. So, we don't specifically have a project right now that we're thinking of using this site for, and certainly not night paving for that matter. But it is something that we would like to, you know, be able to entertain if there was a requirement on a project that we're looking at. And, you know, again, it would be something that would likely be on a very limited, you know, project-specific type of application. But it's something that we would, we and Joe would like to have to consider. Other than that, you know, our request is really straightforward asphalt plant. You know, this is a, like was mentioned, it's a gravel facility right now. It had an AEW done on it. I did the AEW many years ago at this site. And the AEW actually did anticipate, you know, possibility of asphalt plant and a ready-mix concrete plant and all that type of stuff being incorporated at the site. At that time, you know, the environmental review was, that there was no impact, no negative impact due to, you know, those type of operations at the site. So, it comes down to basic, you know, real straightforward asphalt plant being set back significantly on the property. It's not, there's really the mining operation is broken into two pieces. One further to the south, close to County Highway 131, and one on the north side of the wetland. So, what we're anticipating here is to keep the operations of the hot mix plant back away from 131, the north side of the wetland there, as indicated in the picture. And it was mentioned too about the duration. I think typically, probably done a number of different things, but I think typically you've done one-year operations. We have requested in our application materials a three-year window of time where this would be allowed, you know, with the option to renew on that next bridge. So, I'd like, appreciate that you'd consider.
Okay. Is there anyone, Sean, from the public on right now that you're aware of?
Mr. Chair, we received two comments in writing.
Okay.
From the public attached the staff report. They did not indicate they wanted to participate by a meeting, and then the township response submitted also. They abstained and then provided some direction, whatever concerns they do have.
Okay. Thank you. I guess we'll start out with comment from the board. Do you want to start, Jan?
No, I'll pass for right now, but I would like to have the opportunity, if something comes up.
Yep.
To do a question again, please.
Yep, not a problem. Pat?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I made sure to follow it correctly. In terms of extended hours, there is not a current project for which extended hours are necessary or requested. You're asking for the flexibility to have that, assuming that you're bidding on a project that would require that. Did I follow that correctly?
That is correctly. Or that is correct, yes. That's the way we're looking at that. Nothing in particular right now.
From either Fane's side or your side.
Yeah, right, right.
Right now, there's no, it's just if something would come up in the next couple of months.
Got it. And in the application materials, there was an entry or suggestion that those nighttime hours, you're not necessarily asking that you be granted all of them right now, but that there be some layer of additional approval by the zoning administrator. Sean, I would be curious to hear what our board's experience is with vesting directly in you the ability to give a thumbs up or thumbs down on extended hours without coming back to the board.
Yes, so, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission, hours of operation for a gravel pit. All mining operations shall be conducted between hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Any operations not conducted between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. shall require a conditional use permit. So, in my opinion, it's either one or the other. It's a blanket conditional use permit to be able to do that, minus my judgment, because it's a conditional use permit, or one needing to come back when they have a specific job requesting dates and hours for that specific job.
So, as you see it, Sean, we either approve it now, or as was the case with Agenda Item Number One today, if they get a project and have a need, then they come back to request an amendment to their CUP.
Correct, and that's been our common practice, and the applicant's correct. There has been some more night hauling jobs. You had that one recently, when they extended State Highway 25 south of Monticello. They were in for one season on pits along 25 and County Road 39, and then, of course, the interstate project. So, it's been job-specific with a defined date or dates.
All right. Thank you, Sean.
All right. Ken, do you have any comment?
No, Mr. Chair.
Charlie?
I would mention is, I, when Jeff Young reports that this operator does a very good job, I'm gonna take that, you know, that kind of, take that to the bank, you know. So, it's up to the rest of the board. I could go ahead and approve this with the standard hours right now, but if somebody wants to do a site inspection, I'm okay with that either, because we have never been out here. So, I'm okay either way.
All right. Thank you, Charlie. Dan Bravender?
Reading through the two comments that we had in letters, I was gonna question the applicant about the haul route out of the property. Where do you typically go out of the, thank you. When you're hauling out of there, do you go east or west on it? And there was a mention about residential road. What are the, is that a residential road? Or is it a county road?
It's a county road, 131.
131?
Yeah.
And are there a lot of houses along that road? Density?
As you come up to the west or up to 37, there's about four houses.
To the west?
As you get up to the corner to go either east or west.
Okay.
And a lot of the truck traffic likes to come up there, because we have the stoplight on 25 now, the intersection.
Okay.
If they go out of the pit and try to go back to 25 and get on going toward Monticello, it's really hard because of all the traffic. So, a lot of them do have to go up and around. If they're coming back, they can come on 131, but when they go out and back to Monticello, they like to go to the stoplight.
They get to the light, they need to go by the residential.
Right.
Yeah. And that makes sense to get on 25. That can be a bear.
Right, exactly.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, this is Ken. I couldn't hear Commissioner Bravender or nor the applicant very well. Could you just briefly repeat what was said, please?
Mr. Chair, Planning Commission, the concern is about the haul route. Dan was asking, so this is County Road 131. If you go east, you're at an uncontrolled intersection on State Highway 25.
All right.
So, even though that might be the fastest route or the shortest route, if you go west on County Road 131, you travel by the homes that are in that area, but you're able to get on County Road 37, that's uncontrolled also on a busy road, but not like State Highway 25, and head east, which takes you to a stoplight to get on State Highway 25. So, to avoid the homes, you're probably up at this intersection lined up, to not be lined up, drive by the homes in the area.
Thank you, Sean.
Mr. Chair?
Hold on, Jan. Jan, are you done?
I just was questioning the haul route, because I got a better explanation from Joe on that, and it makes sense to me. From looking at the map, it looks like sightlines are real good, you know, coming on to the county road to the south there. So, I don't have a concern in that area, and that would probably be my only concern right now, because there isn't enough distance to trucks to get a lot of speed up coming out of there. It's pretty short, a short distance, so I'm not too concerned about the safety there. So, that's it.
Okay. Jan?
Yes, I would like to make motion that the Planning Commission do a site inspection in order to properly assess this proposed new use of the pit.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor to do a site inspection. Do I have a second?
You have a second from Ken, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I have a motion made and seconded to do a site inspection. Is there any other discussion? There's no other discussion. All those in favor of doing a site inspection? Jan?
Yes.
Jan, are you in favor of a site inspection for the motion?
Yes. Are you asking for Dan or Jan?
Jan, you.
Okay. Maybe you should just call me Janet. Might make it easier in the future.
Okay.
Um, yes, I vote yes.
Pat?
Margaret Staves.
Okay. Kim Felger?
Kim votes aye.
Charlie?
Laurel votes aye.
Dan Bravender?
Abstain.
Dan Mah, aye. Motion carries. We'll have a site inspection and...
Continuing to what date?
We'll continue that to the next meeting.
June 18th.
No, we're not June, yeah, okay. June 18th. So, it'll be continued until June 18th.
Yeah, the meeting would be.
The meeting would be.
Right, not the site inspection.
And we'll set the site inspection to be done between now and the 18th of June. All right? And at the end of our meeting, we'll try to coordinate with everybody as to when we'll be there.
It's a weekday, usually early afternoon or morning. You can contact our office next day or two to find out when we set it. As long as we have access, probably one person will explain.
I'll be there.
Sounds good.
Okay, thanks, guys.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll have a few...
Good afternoon.
Okay. Number four on the agenda is Michael Livermore, and they are at the table. Do you want to give your names, please, for the record?
Michael Livermore. Michael Livermore?
I'm Mike Sherrett, the architect.
Okay. Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there's two people from the public. I just want to make sure they're hearing us. Kaylee, are you hearing the audio and seeing what we're doing here?
Yes. Yes, I am, yep.
Thank you. Laura, same for you?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we'll continue. Mr. Chair, Planning Commission, the property is on the north side of Buffalo Lake. Zoned R1. Land use plan is residential small lot. Existing lakeshore lot that hasn't been developed, an area of platted lots from decades ago that have been built on. The request is to do a land alteration in excess of 50 cubic yards, and also a portion of it being in floodplain. Photo of the property looking from the street view. A site plan showing the house, drive, septic system locations, the pad that is needed for the house. We received a response from one of the direct neighbors that's attached to the staff report. I think the main concern for everybody involved is there's already issues with water in an area that's been developed at a high density, small lots, with a township road, no city sewer, no stormwater collection system by the lake. So, there's already concerns about water impacts in that area. So, we're wanting to make sure this house and septic system can be built, at least not making it worse, taking care of the stormwater on the property and properly diverted to culverts and the lake and the like. My initial impression is a site inspection would probably be a good idea, but I'll leave that up to the Planning Commission.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. Would you like to add to that as to what you're doing, or what you're looking at doing?
Sure. We, as we've, my wife and I have looked at this lot for quite some time, and obviously worked with Mike, our architect, and feel like we've, our footprint of the house is a very modest home. But what Mike's gonna explain is around the buildup of the fill and how we plan on addressing the drainage. I happened to meet with three of the homeowners on Sunday, both sides of the lot and across the street, walked them through our plan on the drainage piece of it, which we'll walk through. So, they, at least from those conversations, they seemed very excited about having a home there. Explained to them how big the, or the size of the house and so forth, and the septic system and the drainage and so forth. So, you know, we're just excited about this community and really think that we came up with what we think is a reasonable plan to try to address this. But I don't know if you want to have Mike?
Yeah, absolutely. If you have comments.
Yeah, just a few. I want to keep it real basic. I think what we've done here is responded to the forces that are pushing on this site. It's a narrow site. We've met all the setback requirements. We've met hard cover. We've met structural coverage requirements. Because the city sewer service is close, but it's not here, we have the septic to deal with. I think if the septic, we didn't have to have the septic, that we would pull the house back a little bit. But we've tried to condense the house as much as possible. We don't have a three-car garage. We have a two-car garage. We have a master on the main, which is what the clients wanted, but it's totaled 1,900 square feet on the main floor, which is a pretty modest house by most standards.
And Mike, that includes the garages, correct?
No, that's the occupied heated square footage of the house.
Okay.
The garages in addition to that. The other thing we've done is provided a grading plan and brought in the minimum amount of fill to keep the house at a level that's just barely above the floodplain, permission, elevation. We've created swales on both sides of the property to gather our water that's coming off of our site and focus it down to the flatter part of the yard where it would soak into the, being soft cover, it'll soak into the yard most likely predominantly. It's pretty flat in the last, but from the house out to the survey line there, it's quite flat. It's only changed about a foot or two, so that water's gonna stop there and percolate into the soil. We're here to say that, what Mike just said is that we've tried to, for economic reasons too, by the way, tried to really consolidate the space as tight as we can make it, stay within the setbacks, and provide a responsibly designed project that has the minimum amount of cut and fill that we could make work, recognizing the requirements of the county regarding that. So, we're here to answer any questions that you have, and listen to what your questions are.
All right, thank you. We'll open it up to the public. Kaylee, do you have any comment?
Yes, I do. I own the lot at 727 14th Street Northwest, which is just northeast of the lot. I did send in a written testimony, but in addition to that, I would like, I am requesting a more in-depth review, specifically from an engineer to come out and look at the water flow, and to do a further investigation of that lot. Right now, there is water that does sit on the, on the north side of the lot, and it does go drain into our, north side of our lot, and goes under our driveway. And I am concerned that with a raised elevation, with a cement driveway, with a septic system, where is that water going to go? It's, I'm nervous that it's just going to push more water into our lot there, where our driveway sits, our shed is, and our garage is right there as well. And looking at the plans, it looks like there is no elevation plans for the septic system. And so, I'd like to know what the plan is for that. We have a mound that sits up about two to three feet, raised elevation. And so, just wondering how that's going to look, what the plans are for that. Our shed sits right on the other side of that, and again, our driveway is right there as well. And then, just what, from the engineer, land surveyor, the builder, Wright County, the homeowner, what guarantees we can be given that everything has been looked at and considered as far as the water flow, so that we won't incur any damages to our property, to our shed, to our home. And then, also looking at the swales, they'll sit right on the property line, it looks like. And what are the plans for those? Is it land? Is it rock? Do we have potential of corrosion from our property with how those are designed? So, it's just another big concern for us as well.
Okay. Is that all you have?
Yes, that is. Thank you.
All right.
Can I ask, can I ask a follow-up question?
Can you just take notes for right now?
Okay.
From the public, Laura, do you have any comment?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
This is Charlie.
Yeah, Charlie?
Um, I actually would like to ask Kaylee a question, and I think where this is going, is we probably should do a site inspection here as well, but does, did I hear you right, though? The water from this lot does not flow toward the lake. It actually flows to the north. Did I hear that right?
I can't, I can't speak on how the water flows on the, on the south side of the property, but there is water that sits. It's like a, it's kind of like a small ditch on the north side of the property, right next to the road, and it fills up at the end of the, when the snow all melts, when there's heavy rain, and then there's a culvert under our driveway. So, the water sits on the east and west sides of our driveway, when there's heavy rain and the snow melts.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Laura, did you have anything to comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, it sounds like there is already an existing concern and issue regarding, you know, water drainage. And based on the initial presentation, it sounds like that was heavily discussed on how to help that situation. So, I think, you know, it could be improvement to what is currently happening there to have, you know, this take place. And personally, too, I guess I wanted to announce or mention that we, my husband and I personally went through a similar situation on a lake lot, very similar to this lot in question here. And we were given the opportunity to move forward on it. And just based on what I have seen with Mike and Tammy, and what Mike Sherrett has put together to address these concerns, I find that this is a very reasonable request that they have carefully considered, you know, the lot specifically, as well as the different setbacks and requirements that it has. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sean, do you have any other that you know of on public comment? Is that all?
No.
Okay. Being there's no other public comment, we'll let the applicant respond to some of the questions that were brought up. He would?
Do you want to comment on the drainage?
If you study the site plan and the topography, it's a very flat lot up by the road. It's flat until it gets about halfway through the site going south. And if there are... And if there are issues on the neighbor's east side of the driveway, that's of course on their property. On the west side, it's still on their property for about 10 feet. And if some aspect of this lot is affecting their west side of their driveway, that's some information we didn't have with creating this design. We've done... When we've had situations where there's really dead flat areas, we often suggest that we do a rain garden, which is... You know what a rain garden is? It's a depression that allows water to gather there and percolate into the soil over time. We'd be glad to look at those kinds of things. They're relatively easy and simple and to understand and simple how they work, but they do work. As far as the topography is concerned, you can see that if you look at the survey, there's a 922 contour on the east side of the subject property, and everything to the west of that is a lower contour. So actually, what's happening on the west side...
Sean, can you put that map up that he's talking about? So we can look at that? Because I can't read. Yeah, thank you.
It's hard to see.
Right there probably.
Can you do the other one? The other...
I can't see the other one.
Plan? No, the other site plan. Not the grading plan, but the site plan. That's all you had?
That's all we have.
Well, that's...
Okay.
Right, right. You said the other, right?
Yeah, okay. Well, there was another one.
We can put up a document up here on this.
Well, we can do that.
Orientation right here.
I have to switch it too. Sorry, what do I do here to switch the...
Tech expert. All the way you were saying.
It's fuzzy, but it's hard to read, but this is a 922 contour, and everything over here is 920, 921 on the other side. So drainage happens perpendicular to the drain lines. So if anything's happening here in this area, it's going this way presently. Back here, here's 23. It's very flat up here where the septic is going to go. The septic is going to be pervious, of course. Probably that would take care of itself, but I'm just thinking about if it's dead flat up here, we're getting accumulation of water in here. I think she was a little less. Happy to do a rain garden up in that corner to try to help accommodate that, not only from our own property, but also what's happening with their property as well.
Again, just to add, as I must have spoken with her husband, Chase, when I was out there meeting, she was... He was over at the neighbor's house. As I was talking through it, I clearly recognized that the drainage piece is clearly an obstacle there, that we want to try to do whatever we can to rectify that situation. So that's why we took some extra time, developed kind of a runoff here, but if we need to do the drainage field to help lessen that risk, that wouldn't be an issue whatsoever.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Janice, do you have any comments?
No.
Pat, any comment? Ken?
Mr. Chair, not at this time. I can barely hear the applicant's explanation of the situation, so I'm hoping we'll have a site inspection. Thank you.
Okay. Charlie?
No, I'll go for a site inspection as well.
Okay. Dan Bravender?
No comment this time.
All right. If there's no comment at this time, and it sounds like there's a couple of the commissioners that would like to do a site inspection and continue it to the June 18th meeting, would somebody be willing to make that motion for a site inspection?
Mr. Chair, Charlie Brown will make that motion.
For a site inspection and continue until June 18th? That is a motion. Do I have a second?
This is Jan. I'll second it.
Okay, Jan has the second.
This is Jan. I'll second it.
Thank you, Jan. Is there any other discussion?
Can I?
The applicant has a question.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Charlie?
What time will the meeting be on the 18th?
I did not hear you, Charlie.
No, I was wondering, what time will the meeting be on the 18th?
So that's the Planning Commission meeting, Charlie. I'm assuming 1:00 p.m. in the afternoon.
So will it be 1:00 o'clock again, Sean?
That's the plan at this time, unless the county board tells me something different.
The applicant has a question here.
So that presents a little bit of a challenge for us. The current owners of the property, we have a closing set for, I believe, it's either that day or the next day, that they're not willing to extend it through this process. So for whatever it's worth, kind of puts us in a tough spot as far as whether or not we can move forward with this.
Your closing is after the 18th.
It's on the 19th.
Well, if we pass it... If we go out and do a site inspection, and if we come back here and if we pass it...
Then we're good.
Then you're good.
Yeah, okay.
If we don't pass it...
Right.
Then...
Or don't pass it and want further information.
Right. But normally on a site inspection on this type of thing, if there's any extra information we need now, is there any... Does any of the commission see of any other information that you would like them to supply or have in writing?
Well, I couldn't hear exactly what he was saying, but I would be interested to see if there's the wetland delineation that's been done.
Mr. Chair, Planning Commission? Jan, so it's not the wetland. You might have meant floodplain. We do have the floodplain elevation. My recommendation would be taking the input from the Planning Commission and the public testimony and what the applicant offered up, rain garden, swale, perhaps some more elevation work, and wanting to make sure we do have all the floodplain requirements met on this plan, and if not, updating information for that 18th meeting. So we don't arrive at the meeting on the 18th.
And need more information.
And I can't predict everything, but it sounds like there's some minimums here, some additional effort that could be made in conjunction with a site inspection that might leave us in a position to decide on the 18th.
Okay. My one point of discussion would be, is there... You've met all the setbacks. Is there anything that we're going to need for variances?
Yes, Mr. Chair. It will need a variance because this is not a type 1 septic system. There's a state law that spells out the conditions that must be met for a lot of this size, not to need a variance. It meets the setbacks, it meets the impervious, it meets height limits, but since it's not a type 1 system, that might make sense on this lot. It would need a formal variance process for that.
For the septic?
Right.
Okay. Is there any other... Is there any other discussion about doing a site inspection? If not, all those in favor of doing a site inspection and continuing until the June 18th meeting? Janice?
Aye. This is Janet. I vote aye.
Pat?
Mallberg, aye.
Ken? Ken?
Felger, aye.
Dan Bravender?
Dan Bravender, aye.
Dan Mall, aye. Motion carries. We'll set a site inspection up, and we'll either call or you can wait now. We'll try to get through this.
Call and aye.
When the site inspection will be.
Charlie will?
Aye. All right.
And then, excuse me?
Yep.
Did you also say that we would receive some feedback prior to the 18th so we could react by then?
Well, no, I would take the feedback.
From today?
From today.
Okay.
Okay. Some discussions with myself and staff.
Even before the site inspection is done? Because they may have different feelings about once they go out to the site. Did you hear about that?
I'm pretty good at knowing what they're indicating and what might come up, and the site inspection could be in four days or it could be on June 15th.
So let's assume this takes place in a week. Is there a chance we hear back on that site inspection and not have the hearing on the 18th?
No. We'll have the hearing.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we don't have anything else on the agenda, so that would mean, when would you...
We have one.
What did I miss?
The discussion.
It's in your final staff report, so...
Oh, it's not on the... I'm sorry. It's in the staff report, not on the agenda.
I think we're done.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
But you could probably set the site inspection before that discussion item.
Let's do the discussion.
Mr. Chair?
All right, we have... We have one other item of discussion.
Number five.
Number five is a Burrell Lemerman request.
Baru.
Baru?
Baru, yeah.
Change word in condition eight.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission, we were trying to figure out how non-domestic animals got put in the staff report. I missed reviewing that. Our term usually uses livestock. Livestock is defined, and there's a common usage for what those animals are. Non-domestic has the potential that it could be tigers and bears. So we would suggest having the proper word for that condition.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the board? If there's no discussion, would somebody like to make a motion to change that wording?
I'd make that motion to change wording to livestock on item number eight.
Do I have a second?
Jan will second. Janet will second.
I have a motion made and seconded to change the wording from non-domestic animals to livestock on item eight. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor, Janice?
Aye.
Pat?
Mallberg, aye.
Ken Felger? Lost Ken. Charlie Burrell?
Burrell, aye.
Dan Bravender?
Dan Bravender, aye.
Dan Mall, aye.
Sorry, Karen.
All right, motion carries. So I don't believe there's anything more to come before the board. We just need to set a time and a date for two site inspections to look at a gravel pit and to look at the property on Buffalo Lake. What do people's calendars look like?